Now that Ms. Richards is seated, we'll go ahead and begin our council meeting. And I will note for the record, ladies and gentlemen, that all members of council are present and accounted for. Appreciate you all being here this evening to participate in this public process. So I have noted everyone is here this evening, and we'll go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll please stand and join us.
My pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item up on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda, and the consent agenda only has one item on it. That item is the council meeting minutes from our meeting of May 18, 2020. Is there anyone who would like to remove those minutes from the consent agenda? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and call for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Merkel, a second by Councilman Burnett, to approve the consent agenda with the council meeting minutes of May 18. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. Councilman Merkel. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up the consent agenda, and we'll move on to tonight's public hearing. I will mention, just for a little housekeeping, for those of you who are here for the third and fourth items on the agenda, those have both been deferred. Those were items V-20-01/E-20-02, Midgard Self-Storage Parking Variance and Height Exception. That item has been deferred by the applicant until Monday, July 27, and it will neither be heard nor considered at this time. And the second item that has been deferred was E-20-04 Burlington Sign Exception. This item has been deferred by the applicant until Monday, June 1, 2020. It will neither be heard nor considered this evening either. So the two items remaining on tonight's agenda were the first item, A, that is Z-20-01/V-20-02, AlphaDev 296 and 304 Thompson Street. Mr. Woodman, I believe you have this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's good to see everyone. The first item before you this evening is a rezoning in variance to construct a 17-lot subdivision with 11 detached homes and six townhomes on 2.21 acres. The proposed density is 7.7 units per acre. The rezoning is requested from R12 to downtown live-work and a variance to reduce the recess requirement for a street-facing garage in the downtown. Property is located at 296 and 304 Thompson Street, which is on the location map on the overhead. It is on the north side of Thompson and west of West Side Parkway, just across from the Street view of the property, the property has frontage along Thompson Street and is developed with two single-family detached homes. Surrounding properties are zone R4A to the north, which is Academy Park, R12 to the east and west, which are single-family detached lots, and mixed-use MU to the south, which is Foundry. Proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan designation of the property, which is mixed-use live-work. Variance is requested to reduce the minimum 20-foot recess requirement. If you have a street-facing garage in the downtown on a single-family detached home, you're required to recess that garage a minimum of 20 foot behind the front side of the home. The applicant states that variance is necessary due to the narrow shape of the property and their proposed product, which does have a focus on outdoor living with outdoor courtyards. This is the applicant's site plan. And the site plan depicts the 11 detached lots up front, right off of Thompson Street, with the two townhome buildings consisting of six units at the rear. The lots are served by a new private street, and then an alley serves the townhomes. Townhomes are overlooking the alpha loop along the north portion of the property. The average lot size of the detached lots is 4,255 square feet. The downtown live-work zoning district allows a minimum 2,500-square-foot lot. All of the homes have a front patio and side courtyard, and the detached lots are a zero lot line, so the homes are pushed to the side property line with 10 foot, a minimum of 10 feet between structures. The townhomes have a front patio along the alpha loop, and they have rooftop terraces overlooking the alpha loop. The setbacks do comply with the downtown live-work district. Each unit will have two parking spaces in the garage, as well as a driveway accommodating two additional spaces. On the original site plan, or actually this site plan, they're showing two guest spaces along the alley, and then there's four on-street parallel spaces along Thompson Street. There was a tree save plan that was emailed to council earlier today, and on that tree save plan, the applicant had added in some additional on-street parking within the development that was at the request of some surrounding neighbors. I will show that plan in just a few minutes. The downtown code would require 43 parking spaces for the development, and they are providing 74. The applicant is proposing a 40-foot right-of-way. Typically, a local road is 50-foot. In this particular case, the city's transportation engineer supported the new shared street, which is 40-foot wide. It is a pervious paver system. If you are familiar with the enclave at Wills at the corner of Rucker and Wills, that subdivision has a paved road system where the sidewalks are shared with the travel lanes. That's exactly what the applicant is proposing here. The roadway gives the applicant greater flexibility for site layout while providing additional infiltration for stormwater. Street will be private, and it will be maintained by the HOA, and the necessary improvements will be able to be accommodated within that 40-foot right-of-way. The alley also has interparcial access to the undeveloped properties to the east and west as well. Just under 20,000 square feet of open space on this site, which represents about 20% open space. The minimum requirement is 10%, so they exceed it. They're meeting open space by way of courtyards, patios, rooftop terraces, Pocket Park, which is located towards the rear of the property, as well as common areas that connect to the The Pocket Park, they call out a fire pit with seating area surrounding the fire pit. And there is, and we have some renderings that I'll show in just a few minutes. There is a fountain proposed in this common area between the townhome buildings. This is the applicant's latest tree save plan. On an original initial submittal, the applicant had proposed to do tree save along five-foot of tree save area along the perimeter of the property lines on the east, west, and north side. Staff didn't particularly care for that particular plan because there were not specific trees called out within the tree save area, so we did ask the applicant to go back to the drawing board and come up with specific tree saves, and this is what you see this evening. So anything with the yellow circle around them represents tree saves. This is a cluster of tree saves here. There are several in this location. And we are also recommending a condition that this 30, northern 30-foot of the property, which will accommodate the alpha loop, will also be a tree save area. The only tree removal in that area would be to remove any dead, dying, or diseased trees, or trees that would need to be removed in order to accommodate the alpha loop. And stormwater is called out as an underground stormwater feature in this Pocket Park here. As I mentioned earlier, too, the applicant had a request from some adjacent neighbors, which we'll go over all those requests as part of the conditions. But one of those requests was to add additional guest parking within the private streets. So there are two additional added in front of the Pocket Park here, and there's one additional here. I think the neighborhood was requesting two, and then the applicant actually added three. The applicant submitted elevations, a number of elevations. This is a bird's-eye view of the development, the architecture that's proposed is neoclassical This is the front, looking at the front of the subdivision from Thompson Street. And as you can see, the both product, both the detached as well as the townhomes are three-story product. Homes have a mix of gable and flat roofs, as you can see, the two right here at the frontage. Here's a view going into the development, so this is pointing north. These are, this is a townhome building here. In addition to the townhomes, of course, as I pointed out here, they do have a flat roof. There are also decorative walls shown on the elevations. You can see, again, going back to the front elevation, you can see the decorative walls meant for aesthetics, as well as to hold up the topography of the site. As you see, we move further back into the development. So this would be that fountain feature, looking towards Thompson Street. Townhome buildings are either side of you, and you'll notice how these homes across the alley here are held up with decorative walls as well. The development would generate 47 PM peak-hour trips, and it would generate approximately 3 to 13 school age children. This item, let me show you the rest of the renderings. This rendering shows that Pocket Park area, and you'll notice that all the homes have the, most of the homes have the wrapped-round porches. Again, I had mentioned earlier the focus on the outdoor living with the courtyards, the porches, and some of them have multi-level porches. This item was shown at the January 8, CZIM. There were several public comments in support of the request. The applicant also mailed letters as part of their citizen participation, and they held four meetings as part of their public outreach. There are a variety of issues that were discussed, including price, architecture, stormwater, alpha loop tree preservation, street paver system, Academy Park fence, alpha loop evergreen screening, density, screening of vehicle headlights, home size, courtyard size, garage, driveway size, and rental restriction. The applicant did make some changes to the site plan and agree to some conditions as a result of those meetings with the neighbors. Staff has reviewed the proposal and finds that it can, that it finds it to be consistent with the vision of the downtown master plan and comp plan, and it is suitable as it relates to the use and development of nearby properties. Approval of the variance should not cause detriment to the public good. The property is long and narrow, which constrains site layout, and the applicant proposes a zero lot line courtyard homes, which further restricts a side-loaded product. The item was considered at the March 5 Planning Commission meeting. Staff recommended approval subject to 27 conditions. There was one public comment from a member of Academy Park HOA in favor of the request, and after discussion, Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval, and that was subject to the following conditions. One is the site-specific condition that specifies the site plan dated January 7, 2020. Two deals with the architecture and materials, and you'll notice that typically residential buildings, homes and townhomes in the downtown do not go to DRB, but we have asked that this subdivision and future residential developments within the downtown be a final approval by DRB. Condition number three, detached lots shall generally utilize existing grades and include decorative walls, as I mentioned on the renderings. Four deals with the Thompson streets, street scape, and how that's developed. Five deals with a new private roadway, the paver system roadway. Six, the final streetscape shall include decorative pedestrian lights. Seven deals with shade trees along Thompson Street and the required 10-foot landscape strip. Eight, roadways with on-street parking shall incorporate curb extensions at intersections. Nine deals with the variance requests allowing for garages to face the new street per the 1.7/2020 plan. Ten, development shall not be gated. Eleven, project entrance shall include decorative landscaping and wall as approved by staff. Twelve, amenity space shall be developed with decorative landscaping, hardscape, firepit, fountain, walls, and seating. Landscape shall include plant selections promoting the historic district. Three deals with the tree save, which I just want to note that that tree save plan does have a different date than the site plan. The site plan has a 1.7/2020 date. The tree save plan does have a 2.26/2020 date. And it also references the tree save area on that northern 30-foot. Fourteen, developers shall plant minimum 6-inch caliber canopy trees on either side of the project entrance at the new street intersection with Thompson Street. Actually, with the alley, I apologize, so within the development. Fifteen, developers shall plant 5-foot landscape strips along the east and west property lines. So the 5-foot landscape strips are already at code requirement, but we wanted to make sure that it was understood that those were required, and we specifically called out evergreen trees within there, just to provide some screening to those future developments to the east and west. Six deals with the development of the alpha loop. The applicant did send in one proposed change, and I will let the applicant address that, but it is, it deals with condition number 16. Currently, we have a, the first sentence ends with construction of the alpha loop completed prior to the first CO. The applicant has asked that that alpha loop be completed by a future date, and again, I will, I will let the applicant address that. Seventeen deals with the rental restriction. No more than 10% of the residential units shall be rented. Eighteen, developers shall provide interparcial access, as they, as they show on their site plan, from, to east and west. Nineteen, fences and walls visible from the public right-of-way shall be decorative as approved by staff. No unfinished wood fences and decks visible from the street. And then conditions 20 through 27 are specifically conditions that were given to us by the applicant and as agreed to by the applicant with the neighbors that they met with. So that would be condition 20, new utilities shall be placed underground. 21, stormwater management facilities shall be underground. 22 deals with stormwater runoff infiltration, and it talks about the design of that particular 23, again, talks about the downstream impacts, the runoff. I'll go ahead and read that 23. I know it's lengthy, but I don't want to miss anything. Prior to a land disturbance permit on property, developers shall hire and pay for licensed, registered professional engineer to conduct a photo journal of downstream water bodies located within 500 feet of the property to determine baseline conditions. I'll stop there, but again, this just goes to, there's been a number of times, I think, where Academy Park representatives have come before council when we've had some developments proposed along Thompson Street and Haynes Bridge that backed up to Academy Park, and there's been some concerns about the impacts to the stream system that runs through Academy Park. So this condition was agreed to by the applicant. 24, if allowed by Academy Park HOA to be installed upon its property, the developer shall install an eight-foot-tall decorative fence with maintenance access gate along the common boundary of the subject property and Academy Park. 25, developers shall install evergreen landscape material along the alpha loop if no impacts to existing trees. So there are situations where this will be a tree save area along the alpha loop, so there would, there are situations where you cannot plant evergreens under another tree because it will just, it just won't grow and it will die, so that's what we have, if appropriate, there. 26, developer shall install landscape material on the south side of Thompson Street, so on the foundry side of Thompson Street at the new entrance into this subdivision. And the purpose was, there were some concern with a homeowner across the street with headlights shining into the windows there. Because this, they are utilizing some of the existing grade of this property, the cars would be coming up a hill as they approach Thompson Street, and there were some concerns about headlights and windows. And 27, developers shall provide at least two additional on-street parking spaces within the development. Of course, I pointed out that they had added three. And that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any questions from council on this item? Councilman Hypes?
Michael, I see there's a reference in here to code-compliant driveways. What's a code-compliant driveway?
The minimum 18-foot long.
Okay. So that doesn't need to be a condition because that's her code?
The, it does not need to be a condition.
Is there a code-compliant garage depth?
Well, there's a parking space requirement, size requirement, 9 by 19, so yes.
And that's, so they either comply with the code in that regard, or they'd have to seek a variance?
Correct.
So, so at a minimum, these will be minimum 18-foot driveways and minimum 19-foot depth?
The, yes, the parking, the required parking spaces within the garage need to be 9 by 19, yes.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you, sir. Is there an applicant here that would like to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor Gilman, Gilman, and council members. I'm Joshua Scoggins with Miles Hansford in Talent. For those of you who are expecting Ethan, I gave him the night off, so please don't be too disappointed. I have the pleasure of being here tonight on behalf of AlphaDev LLC, the applicant. Mr. Woodman did such a thorough job explaining the project that I should be able to breeze through this presentation fairly quickly. As he said, we're asking for 17 residential units, a mixture of six townhomes, 11 single-family detached, and we are asking for a rezoning to the downtown live-work zoning district, which again is in compliance with comp plan, and the staff and Planning Commission have recommended support of that. The most important thing I want to emphasize tonight is the quality of the project. I think that you're going to notice, as I go through this presentation, multiple references to items, which I call big-ticket items, that are not required, but nevertheless increase the desirability of this project in terms of both public and private amenities. My little slide will go there. As Mr. Woodman also said, this is across Thompson Street from the Foundry, and backs up to the south side of the neighboring subdivision there, which, excuse me, the name escapes me at this moment. But we are in the process of working, as Mr. Woodman said, with those property owners and have agreed to several conditions, and have added those as 20 through 27. And as we move through the project, I'm sorry, Academy Park, I don't know why I had it written down, I couldn't read it. This plan to the right here on this slide is the original site plan that we submitted with the project, and I want you to notice, one of the things that we have upgraded here is the fact that we are doing private streets with pavers as opposed to just asphalt. That's one big-ticket item that we've added to this project to make it something that Alpharetta can be proud of. Before we jump too far into the site plan, I do want to touch base on the variance request and explain to you why that's necessary. Whenever you have an offset requirement for your garages, it has, and I see it all over northeast Georgia and North Fulton, it has the propensity to create what I call an L-shaped house. If you look at that picture on the bottom left-hand side of the slide, that green area is where the garage offset would be. So what that would create, and I'm concerned about that on this particular project, is because of the outdoor live-work-play theme of this, is it would create basically a paved area where people would store stuff, park their cars, park their golf carts, park their bikes, and leave it there. Now, I want you to notice on this site plan to the right, all those red arrows, those tell you which direction these homes face in terms of their orientation to the street. Those green lots are the only lots we need the variance on. The rest of these homes face, with the townhomes facing the alpha loop, and the two in the front facing Thompson Street, with the two single-family in the north facing the alleyway and the park respectively, you're going to have this requirement satisfied on all but those seven lots. And because of the neoclassical-type architecture on this particular project, the backs of these homes look very similar to the front, so you're not going to notice any real difference depending on the orientation of the house. As Mr. Woodman said, the two purple areas on the plan to the left are the common areas here on the project with that rhombus-looking shape being the Pocket Park, where we have another big-ticket item, which is underground detention. That's something that you don't see a lot with residential projects, but something that our client wants to do, again, makes things more aesthetically pleasing and benefits the community by having that area available for use rather than a big concrete pond. Those areas that are in the green-looking color there are the additional off-street, or off-site parking areas we agreed to with the neighbors. There will be three spots, one designated by each shape there, for additional parking. That's in addition to the spaces that were referenced by Mr. Woodman, so as being shown on the plan. Here's the tree save, it's superimposed onto the plan, and that's also the, I think, the original tree save plan. I won't go back through all of these elevations, as Mr. Woodman did, because he did a great job of explaining how these homes will look and feel. Three stories, obviously, we're talking about the townhomes starting in the mid-800s and the single-family detached lots, starting at 1.1 million each. So obviously, this is not a low-rent area here, and we are looking forward to keeping The last slide I want to bring up is this comparison to the various densities of other subdivisions and developments that are in this downtown overlay district. We fall roughly in the middle, density-wise, with respect to these other 15 projects that have been approved. We are just under eight units an acre. The reason we are at that density is not, again, just because we're trying to max out the site to the greatest extent possible, but because we have agreed to several items that we are building that are big-ticket items that necessitate this density. that we are building that are big-ticket items that necessitate this density. The building of the alpha loop is a quarter of a million dollars, right off the top. The pavers, the underground detention, the eight-foot wrought-iron aluminum fence that will be built along the common boundary line with the neighborhood to the north, all of those things that we've agreed to necessitate having the site plan approved the way it is. Again, it goes without saying that this is a great project, it's a beautiful project. I don't typically work on projects that look this nice. And I, I mean, you have something to be proud of that you have down here. And I was walking along downtown as I came in this afternoon and was looking at what you've done, and it's something to be proud of, really is. So I want, we want to keep going with that. We're, we're not here to cut corners, and my client's committed to doing all of the things that we've stated in the conditions. And the only change, as Mr. Woodman referenced, is a change to condition number sixteen, where we have asked that instead of building the alpha loop and that $250,000 item right at the outset, that we be allowed to obtain COs for fifty percent, or I guess eight of the homes, prior to doing that. Again, I can understand why a local government would want that constructed at the outset, as with any public improvement, but on this particular project, it is so small, and you're not dealing with big national builders who have that kind of, you know, I'll just write a check, I don't care what it, what it is, I'll just write it. We would just ask for some consideration and leeway on that. It, it will get done, but we would, we would certainly appreciate consideration. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I hope I didn't leave anything out that you were expecting me to, to bring up. So if you do, please let me know.
Before I go to the rest of council, excuse me, I have a question, just based on the change you referred to as your last statement about the condition as far as postponing the construction of that, would you be amenable to a condition which called for a bond, just to make sure that it would move forward if something prevented you from moving forward with the development in a timely manner?
Um, the bonding requirement certainly is something we could look at. I haven't had a chance to discuss it with my client. The only issue with bonds, obviously, is that unless you're Lennar or Pulte, you have to put the money up in that amount to get a bond for that amount. So I'm not sure if that necessarily fixes the problem, but I certainly can, can find out.
Okay. I was just curious because the challenge we face, and we've unfortunately ran into this back before 2010-
Sure.
-when the economy took a, a bad turn, was we had a lot of developments that had conditions that sat for a long time, and so-
Sure.
-we'd really like to have some assurance that the alpha loop would be built through that sector in a reasonable amount of time, I think.
And, and to your point, having litigated with a lot of bonding companies over that very issue, they tend to want to fund those things about as much as any insurance company wants to pay out any kind of claim. So, um, not to the great bonding companies, but it, it's not necessarily always cracked up to be with that.
I understand, I was just curious.
No, absolutely. Great question.
So, Councilwoman Richard?
Have you selected a builder for the project?
No, ma'am, not at this time. We are still working to finalize, it's my understanding, we're working to finalize the builder for the project. Obviously, given the renderings that you saw, which are also attached to the zoning conditions and incorporated by reference into those, you're dealing with a very small handful of custom builders. This won't be, won't be developed by some of my other bigger clients.
Thank you.
May I approach him, Mitchell?
Thank you. Let me- Thank you, Mr. McCoggins?
Coggins.
It's Coggins, all right. Thank you for being here tonight. It looks like a beautiful project. I think any, any neighboring, um, neighborhood should, should really, um, love this feature as a part of their development. One concern I have is a condition, and I had spoken with Mr. Underwood earlier at the scene, at least fifty percent of the homes, and I'm counting nine instead of eight, will be, um, fifty percent of either unpainted brick or stone on all four sides of the home.
And I, I did get that, that note from Ethan. The only thing I would ask with respect to that is that when we're dealing with these overlay districts that are so architecturally specific in terms of the fact that we go to the design review board and that we work with staff, every condition requires us to work with staff, from the color of the house to the location of the bushes, I, I would, I would prefer if the council would leave just that in the purview of staff. They know what your vision is, and I'm sure there are going to be houses in here that are four-sided, brick and stone. Just tying it to that, I don't know if it would necessarily conflict with anything Mr. Woodman might see later on. I mean, we're talking about houses that are in the seven figures, so I, brick and stone tend to kind of become meaningless, at least to me, when we start reaching that dollar figure.
Right. It's something that we've asked of other neighborhoods.
Sure.
We ask it of the foundry, we've asked it of other neighborhoods on, on Thompson Street, and so it's, if it's not written down, as you well know as an attorney, it doesn't get done some of the times, so.
I, I do, I just, I just understand that the, the overlay and the staff control to what we, like, you, you guys, like I said, as I was bragging on you earlier, you had it locked down already. Um, a lot of jurisdictions don't, and it wouldn't be uncommon for me to be up here with 250 zoning conditions. Your staff, your codes, your overlays, the price of these, I think, locks it down. And as Mr. Hypes was alluding to earlier, where we have what I call redundant conditions, conditions that are duplicative of what's already in the code or what the staff's already going to require us to do, I just prefer to minimize those as much as possible. I mean, I understand, I certainly understand, and I understand that the world could end tomorrow, and it almost did, and I'm glad we're back. But I, I think that unless somebody just throws your ordinance in the trashcan, which I guess is conceivable, then I don't think you have anything to worry about with this one.
Right, I understand. The staff follows the conditions as written by council, and so that's why I'd like to include that. And for me, and the other council members can speak for themselves, but you've already got six of the condominiums that are all four-sided brick anyway, as, as, from your renderings, so that would certainly count toward that goal. So we're talking four, three, excuse me, my math is not real good, all right, three additional.
Are you done?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Burnett, and then I'll give the Florida Councilwoman Merkel.
To, uh, a question, well, I'll, I'll start there because I, I agree with him. I, I would never sit up here and, I'm not the guy who's going to ask you how much neighborhood is, but when you volunteer it and you say you're going to build a 1.1 million-dollar neighborhood, you're going to build it. And so I'm fully supportive of your desire to see brick and, and stone. And I also think, I appreciate the fact that you sit here to represent property rights as an attorney, and you don't get what, you, you rarely get what you don't ask for. So I, I, you can always sit up, sit up, sit down there and, and try, and I respect that. If you wouldn't mind going through, one of the concerns that I have is the size of the streets. I just want to make sure that they adequately, public safety is really important, and it's dense down there. And I know that everything meets the code, but I just want to make sure that our, that it's, it's something that our Department of Public Safety is able to deal with because accidents happen, and, and I want to make sure that those people that live there aren't in a place that are-
Absolutely. Uh, one, one of the, one of the important things to note is this will not be gated via condition. So we don't have to worry about Knox boxes or fire departments being able to get in, that sort of thing. This will be an open private street. Also, I believe the Department of Transportation has said it's, it's okay and is supportive of the forty-foot-wide right-of-way because of the fact that the sidewalk pavers are going to be basically at-grade, I believe, with this street, and the fact that we have all of the off-street parking, I believe it was seventy-some-odd spaces. We, I don't think you're going to see what I call in my neighborhood, too many people parking in the street. And so when you don't have that, I, I can certainly see that the public safety issue is mitigated by no gates and also not having, having more than ample parking. All of these houses have two-car garages, of course, and with all of the off-street parking, plus the eighteen-foot, Mr. Hypes's point was actually very well taken, the eighteen foot-long driveways also make sure that you can park two standard vehicles bumper-to-bumper without having one jut into the street. That's where the eighteen-foot requirement comes from, at least.
Oh, we lived that.
Sure. So I certainly can understand that concern, but I do think in this case forty feet is sufficient, especially when you think about it, if you have a subdivision with a standard street, it's typically twenty-four feet back of curb to back of curb. Even if the right-of-way is fifty feet, that's really thirteen feet in the front, each person's front yard in the way of utility easements and right-of-way. That's not the street bed. Street bed's twenty-four feet wide on a standard residential subdivision street. Here, you have what is essentially a forty-foot-wide subdivision street. So you will be able to, I think, probably have better access for public safety vehicles than you would in a traditional subdivision where they'd have to go up on the curb or into people's yards.
My last question for you is on condition number twenty-seven, the developer shall provide at least two additional on-street parking spaces within the development. You alluded to that you guys are going to create three?
Yes.
Are you amenable with the fact that we condition three into number twenty-seven?
I would actually defer to Mr. Brian King on that one. He is our site engineer. I may have misspoken, I thought that we were adding three. I want him to make sure that I'm not misspeaking since I'm covering for Ethan on that. Brian, or Wynden?
Rhonda, could I?
Or Rhonda?
Good evening, I'm Rhonda Ledbetter with Engineering 303. I work with Brian King. So your question was about the three parking spaces. So yes, we did add the one additional one to the left side, and we only added one there to save the trees behind it. There shouldn't be an issue, including the three spaces, because we intend to put it in there.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Merkel, you have the floor?
I don't want you to get all the way back there and act like I got, because my parking is too. In the first view that we had, there was, I thought, four on-street parking spaces on Thompson Street?
Yes.
And this one looks like maybe we lost two of those, or is it just the way it was drawn?
Um-
To the right of the entrance?
I think he's looking at the screen.
Oh, the screen. There's still, there's four total.
There's still two on each side of the entrance?
Yes, on Thompson Street.
Okay, because the very last drawing I saw, probably the most recent, looks like it was gone.
Was that the tree save drawing?
Might have been.
No, sir, there's still four.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you, Rhonda.
Any other questions from council? Councilwoman Richard?
Sorry, Mr. Scoggins, just to follow up on Councilmember Mitchell's questions about the elevations, if you could, if we could have the elevations put back up-
Certainly.
I'm looking at the ones that, that follow the bird's-eye view. So, I can't see which, okay. So in that particular one, it looks like the single-family home to the left is at least two-sided brick, is that correct, what it's described?
Right, I mean, certainly, I think that what we would be, what we would be dealing with here is whatever's on the, the front and one side would be on the other side. I don't think that we would have a situation where that would not be the case. I'm trying to get a better-
As I look through these, though, it looks like there's a fair number of single-family homes with either brick-water tables or-
Certainly.
-fully brick, so, and, and it looks like the townhomes, at least the way they're depicted, look like they're all brick as well.
Yes, on the, on these renderings, that, that's the case, and those are incorporated, like I said, into the zoning conditions.
Right, so to follow up on his, his suggested condition about including a certain percentage to be brick or stone, are you open to that based on what we see here in the renderings?
Well, there's a difference, I want to make sure I articulate this correctly. A difference between what I think the ask was, which was at least half of the homes would be brick or stone, and then having fifty percent brick or stone on a house, so the houses with water tables wouldn't qualify. If, um, please tell me if I'm misstating that, Commissioner, or Councilman.
It just depends on the architect.
I mean, that's, that's my, so as far as having flexibility, I agree, I mean, the townhomes, I don't think I've seen a hardy, a four-sided cementous siding townhome in a while, but I think the idea here was just to provide flexibility. They are certainly not going to all be hardy plank, not even close, because again, staff controls all this. And I don't want to tie Mr. Woodman's hands. I mean, the council is certainly free to do-
Okay.
-what the council wants to do, that's your legislative authority.
Mm-hmm.
I just, it's, it's something that we, we would just prefer flexibility on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Woodman, if I could, I'd like to clarify something. I'm just curious, the applicant had mentioned that this was a non-gated private road, and I've been here a little while, and I don't remember us having one of those before, so if you could tell me a little bit about that and where we may have done that before and the benefits and-
A non-gated private, I believe, so Midwick, just to the west-
So that is a non-gated private road?
That's a private road-
Okay.
-there, and that's not gated. We do have a, we have a condition or regulation in the downtown code that you are not to, to gate developments within the downtown. But I, I can't think of many, Midwick was the first one that came to my mind, but just trying to think-
That's fine. I mean, I said, I-
We do have a problem with that.
I was here for Midwick, and I, I did not recall that that was a non-gated private road, so when he mentioned that, I was, I didn't catch that before. Okay, so we don't see any issues with having a non-gated private road?
Uh, the, you know, we've worked with Eric Graves, the city's transportation engineer on this one, and Eric's been heavily involved, and Eric has been fine with that. He is here, if you'd like to hear his opinion on it this evening.
Eric, do you have any opinion, or? I'm just curious about that. Does it keep them from putting 5G towers in the right-of-way because it's not publicly owned?
I will, I will mention that I, I heard that the concern about the width of the right-of-way and cars parking on the street. I did men, in one of the conditions, we do have a sentence in there that says that they do need to put signs on the street that would say "No Parking," so people would not be allowed to park on the street, except for in those designated on-street parallel parking spots.
We, we do this quite regularly when developers are trying to use the more innovative streets and, and trying to be a tighter, you know, the tighter roadway width in previous areas. So anything that is, basically anything that's not over twenty-four feet is, ends up being a private road. The only, the only public street in, in east of Maine is Cricket Lane, the rest of the street, streets are private. The Enclave at Wills, it also has the brick-paver joint-use roadway, also is a private street.
Thank you. Learn something all the time, and I appreciate that.
The difference in the, in the right-of-way, the street width of the Enclave at Wills is the exact same, you know, the actual functional street width as, as being proposed here. The Enclave at Wills does have a fifty-foot access easement, you know, versus the forty-foot access easement proposed here. So there's-
Great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Burnett?
You may not want to go too far, Eric. Uh, and this, my question, it, behind the- And this, my question behind the mayor's is, what jurisdiction does, let's say, we have a milling and resurfacing program where Pete does a great job, re-does all the roads, what happens if that road goes into disrepair and it's considered private? Do the residents just have to sit there and complain with an HOA forever and hope that something happens, or does the city have any sort of grounds to say, "You guys have pavers. Your road looks like garbage. Can you fix it?"
Well, typically, the residents actually manage the HOA, and they have the pavement structure for the reserves to repave those over a 20-year period or 15-year period that they're going to need to do some resurfacing and some major maintenance on those. And that's, that's the idea behind the, you know, the, you know, their control and being able to take care of it themselves. So, they will, they will require their HOA to do the maintenance. We do get about that 15 or 20 or 25-year timeframe on some of the, on some of the HOAs that did not plan well, and they come back and say, you know, "We would like you to, you know, bring us back and be public roads," and typically, their roads were not built to the 50-foot right-of-way and the 29-foot back-of-curb to back-of-curb dimensions, and so they're, you know, not, you know, they don't have the right kind of curbing, and so we don't allow, you know, we don't recommend that they, you know, would come to, before the board and request to be public roads.
Thank you.
Councilman Binder?
This is not the first time we've got an 11th-hour, 50% brick thing requirement. What would it entail for us to look into changing the design guidelines so we're not changing it up the night, night before?
Well, at council's direction, we can bring, you know, UDC tax amendments forward if that's the desire of council. The reason why staff did not put a percentage requirement is we do have certain architectural styles that are approved for use in the downtown, and so we felt that the architectural style would dictate the material. However, I do not believe what's being requested of the applicant in this instance is, you know, is unreasonable. I think that, you know, especially that they're showing a four-sided townhome building, which represents six units. It's a matter of three additional units, the houses to be brick or stone, and they're clearly showing in the elevations some of the detached homes with the brick.
But we had that, and that, that's for, was it next to North Point Mall, was another 50% stone more?
Yeah, I believe the condo project, yes, we did have a percentage of either brick or stone on the Providence Group condo project over in the North Point area that was added.
I guess just so we can reduce surprises beforehand, if we could...
Sure.
Maybe get a consensus of what, what percentage? I don't know, maybe it's 45%, or maybe it's 55. I don't know, but we could get to a number that we all agree to, so it's not the night before.
Sure.
Councilwoman Richard?
Michael, you're still here. We have several developments along Thompson Street that constructed portions of the alpha loop. What were the conditions in regards to COs for those particular projects? Do you recall?
Oops, got it right the first time there. So, this is a map of Thompson Street, and you'll notice, of course, Midwick, there was a condition that the alpha loop be constructed, constructed with the first CO, and they did that. There are times, you know, I don't, I don't recall if we had it at first CO for Burnett Circle. I believe that we did. The Providence Group, the Notting Hill Development that will be considered next month, the recommendation is for the section of the alpha loop that will come down Park Street, be built with the first CO. That is typically the staff-recommended condition. I know that we have had applicants that have requested some changes with that, and, you know, in some cases, I think, for example, like the TPA 360, Tech Village, I believe not with their last appearance before City Council, but previous plan, they had requested a similar type change. But I do understand that there are some concerns. We've had some recent trouble with a development that had a pedestrian bridge that didn't get put in, and it's been pretty difficult to get that particular improvement done.
Right.
So, I do understand the concern of the council with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time? Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards this evening for this item? But since this is a public hearing, excuse me, this is a public hearing, so if you are here and would like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity to come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer a motion to approve Z-20-01/V-20-02, Alpha Dev/296 and 304 Thompson Street. I will go through the conditions quickly and identify any recommended proposed changes that I am suggesting to the conditions. The conditions 1 through 12, I am not proposing any changes to what was approved by the Planning Commission on 1 through 12. I am, conditions 13 and 14 and 15, I am not making, proposing any changes to those. In regards to the condition number 16, I am proposing that we keep the staff condition in there, which is completed prior, the alpha loop materials approved by staff construction completed prior to the first CO of the development. And the rest of the language in condition 16 remains the same. I am not making, suggesting any changes to 17, 18, or 19 in regard, oh, I'm sorry. I am adding condition number 20. I am proposing a new condition number 20, at least 50% of the homes, which would be nine, will be 50% of either unpainted brick or stone on all four sides as approved by the DRB.
Just as a matter of procedure, there is already a 20?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
So...
I'll make that number 28.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you. And then in regards to the conditions 20 through 27, which were agreed by the developer with the various surrounding neighborhoods, I am suggesting a change to number 27. Developer shall provide at least three on-street parking spaces within, within the development as shown on the tree save, tree save plan dated 2/26/20. And then condition number 28, I'll read it again, at least 50% of the, of homes, nine will be 50% of either unpainted brick or stone on all four sides as approved by DRB. And that is the end of my motion.
Second.
May I ask a question? Is there any specific reason that the condition reads "Unpainted brick"?
Yeah. Same question.
It's, it's, we're becoming inundated with it. You see other areas. There's plenty of white houses in here. If we don't specify it, they'll all be white, like, but that's the reason.
I'm just curious.
We had specified that stone and brick across the way, and they even painted the stone. They went to the trouble of buying expensive stone and painted it white, and it's just a dying fad, but everybody hasn't gotten the message yet, but...
So, they'll unpaint it when it's not...
Right.
That's fine. I was just curious, because I might be amenable to an amendment like that or a change like that to the conditions if I could understand, but I had to struggle with forcing not only to make it brick, but to make sure they can't paint it. I mean, we've got a, as he alluded to earlier, we've got a very extensive design process already, and to micromanage fads, I'm not sure is something we should continue to do.
I got a question, maybe for staff, but two on the, the percentage of brick, but based on number, number two, talking about the architecture materials to be developed substantially similar to submitted renderings, to Councilmember Richard's point, they show a lot of brick there. I mean, so wouldn't that kind of be redundant adding an item 28? I don't know if that's something for Mr. Woodman to answer, but do we need to put in item 28 if they're showing substantial brick already?
Could I?
I think the proposed condition would reinforce what's already in condition number two, but because this is going to DRB as well, I do think that the condition number 28 would be necessary. I will tell you, as condition two is, is written, we would look at the renderings, and the renderings show two full buildings of brick townhomes. We're going to require full brick on all four sides of those townhome buildings. If they show some of the detached homes to be brick in the renderings, they would not be able to come forward with all siding detached homes and expect approval. That's at least the way that staff would look at that. But I think that the new condition would just reinforce that.
I'm, I'm going to offer a substitute motion for what was read, but removing item number 28.
I'll second the substitute. All right, we have a motion, a second, with the only change being removal of 28. Okay. Councilman Hyipes has asked for the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are approaching a vote on this project, and I did want to compliment, I think it's an amazingly beautiful project. To me, I don't know what the architectural style would be, but they, to some degree, look like plantation homes, you know, with the double-layer balconies, and I just do believe as a, as a businessperson that when you make the investment in something, especially at that level, that, you know, we've got to give a little latitude to the people who have the actual skin in the game, and, you know, they're going to build things, hopefully, that are going to sell to that market that they're targeting, and, you know, over $1 million homes on Thompson Street, I'm sort of inclined to let those who have skin in the game have some latitude on, on what they think their market is. If it was garish or something, and that's a very subjective thing, you know, I would, I would be supportive of things that are garish, but our subjectivity and supplementing our judgment on architectural things, especially at that investment level, I do find it a little bit troubling, and I support the substitute motion for that reason.
Mr. Woodman, I'm sorry, but I do have a follow-up question, only because it was a substitute motion made before I could ask my question, so I had to continue with that.
Sure.
I'm just curious. So, if we condition this, and three of these homes, in addition to the townhomes, were unpainted brick, and somebody paid $1.2 million for them, and two years later, they wanted to paint it white, would the condition still apply to the homeowner?
The council conditions always remain on the property unless changed by council. So...
See, and I think I've got a problem with that. I mean, it may be a fad, but if I paid $1.2 million for a house, my gosh, if I wanted to paint it white, I'd paint it white. Okay, I was just curious, because if there was a workaround, and in 20 years, they decided they wanted to paint it white or something, but if they're prohibited from now until the end of time, okay, well, thank you for clarifying that. Any other Councilmember in it?
With complete respect to Councilmember Hyipes, I do feel like when you renegotiate, when you rezone and renegotiate a property with the city that you're in, I feel like that looks out for the residents on, on the whole. I feel like when they shop, we should shop. When, when they ask for considerations to certain things, so should we. Just because you're going to build a $1.2 million home, that's not something I can insinuate with legal grounds. I realize that a lawyer may respond to me. I don't, I don't feel like, from a legal perspective, that's one of the things that we can't ask or approve or deny based on evaluation of a property, but when an applicant comes forward and, and insinuates that they're going to pay $800,000 to $1.1 million, I believe that the bar changes, and I believe that it should. So, I appreciate, there are always great conversations and good comments up here. I appreciate that, but that is truly how I feel, especially knowing that the die is largely cast on Thompson Street, and there's not a lot left. I'm grateful for, you know, the, the changes that we have made as a council to make that street. You know, there are mistakes that have been made along there, along the way, and I'm glad to see that rectified, and I hope that the process and the project that you guys are working through is a successful one, but I'd also say, I would love to see more people come forward with the attitude of taking roads off the city payroll, candid, in, in full disclosure, but there's nobody that's going to come forward to build 17 homes that's not backed by a bunch of private money, a hedge fund, or whatever. So, we ought to be asking, no mom and pops coming in here boo-hooing $1.1 million homes. And I think that we're all smart enough to know that. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been on here for eight and a half years, and I can't tell you how many times a developer, and in this case, the difference is, we don't even know who the builder's going to be. We have not identified a builder yet. To me, that's problematic, and that screams out to me, condition it to get what you want for your community, because if you're not protecting your, the fellow neighbors and the rest of the community's property values, then they're not going to, I'm not saying you won't, sir, this isn't a general statement, but I've seen far too many builders come in and promise they're going to do brick and stone. The development gets built, and the design review board doesn't ask for it, for whatever reason, they didn't hear the, the request, and one home after another gets painted white with concrete siding, and you can ride around and look at it. I'm not naming any names, but I've seen it happen more and more. And I'm driving through other communities where they're asking for brick and stone, and they're getting it, and I don't know why this is such a struggle here, but hopefully we can work on that together and come up with something we can all live with.
Councilman Binder?
Just want to take a second here and say this is a completely great thing. It looks like all of us like what you're proposing, and so we get to argue about things that have been long, longstanding issues. And I do not disagree at all with, with my friends over there. My concern is, is when we see this 50% thing pop in, it's a one-off, and it happens a couple of times. Let's do the right thing and fix, fix the playbook, so then, when these fine people come in and they're working months-long with you, it's not a last-second audible. So, fix, fix the design guidelines, fix whatever you need to fix to put it in there, and I'm sure you're going to find agreement on this council of where you want to do it, but just these last-second ones, I'm, I'm just done with, and, but the good news is, we're support, I'm at least supportive of the project, but...
Do we have any other comments on the substitute motion? Is everyone clear on what the substitute motion is? It is similar to the motion originally made with the conditions as stated, and would you like to list the changes that you made?
I just first, I just...
Just 28 was the one in the substitute, but do we have enough clarity that I don't have to go back through the changes? Okay, just want to make sure there were little moving parts in there. So, all those in favor of the substitute motion to approve the development without the condition requiring 50% unpainted brick, please vote yes, otherwise... the condition requiring 50% unpainted brick, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And the motion does pass for three. Congratulations, thank you. Next item up on the public hearing agenda is item Z-20-02/V-20-06, Cedric Residence, Devois Road. Mr. Woodman, you once again have the floor.
All right, the next item before you is also a rezoning in variance. This rezoning in variance is to construct one single-family detached home on a .29-acre lot in the downtown. Rezoning is requested from C2 General Commercial to DTMU Downtown Mixed Use, and there are two variances requested, one to reduce the recess, the garage recess requirement, again, for a street-facing garage in the downtown, and then the other variance is to reduce the minimum driveway length. The location map is on the overhead, and the property is located on the south side of Devois, between Alpharetta Highway and Karen Drive, which is the Alpha Park subdivision. Here's a street view of the property. It's a vacant property. This is the Seven Seas Cafe on Devois. The property is to the left of Seven Seas, facing Seven Seas. And this is the secondary driveway to the Colony Park Office Park that backs up to the property. This is the property in this location. Surrounding properties are Zone C2 to the north and west, O&amp;I to the south and east, Bank of America is located to the north, Seven Seas Cafe to the west, and the Colony Park Office Park to the south and east. Zoning proposal is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan designation of the property, which is mixed use. I did mention that there are two variances requested, to reduce the requirement for the street-facing garage to be recessed a minimum 20 foot behind the front facade of the home, and to reduce the minimum 18-foot-long driveway. Garage is depicted to be in line with the front setback of the home with a 10-foot-long driveway, as currently proposed, and it appears that that garage could be recessed in order to comply with the minimum driveway requirement. I'll get into a little bit more discussion of that in just a minute. But the property does have an unusual shallow shape. The average depth of this property is only 63 feet deep, which does make that street-facing garage recess requirement very, very difficult to meet on this particular property. And this is the site plan for the Maxwell at Devois and South Main Street, and the reason why I'm showing you this is the applicant's property is roughly in this location where this green dot is. And I wanted to use this particular plan to show you that, of course, GDOT has a roadway project in the vicinity of this property. They'll be realigning, as well as the improvements along South Main Street, GDOT will be realigning Devois Road, which currently goes on the south side of Bank of America, and they'll be moving Devois to the north side of the Bank of America, and this will be a signalized intersection. The remnant piece of Devois Road will remain. There'll be a write-in only into what they're referring to as Old Devois Road, but there are no other improvements planned along that remnant section of Devois. It is estimated, and this was an estimate before COVID-19, that this roadway project, the GDOT project, would begin by the end of 2020. This is a survey of the property. This is the Seven Seas property right here, and you can see this is the vacant property. The applicant originally purchased this property for a management office for Sedgwick Management, but never, and they actually went through rezoning for that and never went forward with building that property with the office. This is the applicant's site plan on this lot. The applicant is proposing a two-story, approximately 3,500-square-foot home with detached garage facing Devois, so this is Devois Street. This is the home. There's a courtyard in the middle, and then there's a detached garage on the end of the The applicant does request the downtown mixed-use zoning for this property, and they are asking to allow, of course, for the residents, but there's a second floor above the detached garage, and the applicant would like the ability to have a dwelling within this space, it's 600-square-foot space, dwelling, a office, or an artist's studio within that particular area. The setbacks that are depicted on this plan are 10-foot on the front, side, and rear. However, the downtown mixed-use district only requires a 0-foot side setback and 6-foot rear setback, which will allow for adjustments to the site plan in order to accommodate that And we really need to have that code-compliant driveway, because, as I mentioned, the GDOT project does not propose any on-street parking in this particular area. Of course, the courtyard provides the required amenity space for this particular property. The building elevations, so the applicant proposed, this is the rendering, applicant's rendering prepared by Lou Oliver. The applicant and Lou Oliver did meet with the city's downtown consultant, because the initial elevation that came in was a little bit on the contemporary side, and so the city's downtown consultant did provide some markups to the applicant's architect, and this was the resulting elevation. They added in some header details around the windows, and some detailing at the top of the structure as well. I did have a recent conversation with the applicant, and they are, the applicant is looking for a little bit of flexibility with the elevation. I will discuss the particular condition, it's condition number four, when I go over the conditions, but basically, what the applicant is looking for is, they do, the applicant does like this elevation that was prepared by Lou, but they're thinking, rethinking the architecture. They do want to meet one of the historic architectural styles approved for the downtown, but just aren't sure which style that they would be ending up with. And I can, the applicant is here, and we'll be able to give you a little bit more information about that. Of course, staff is recommending final design approval by DRB of this residence. This item was shown at the February 12th CZIM meeting, and there were no public comments. Staff has reviewed the proposal and finds that it can support the request for rezoning in variance, the variance to reduce the garage recess requirement. The proposal is consistent with the vision of the downtown, and we do support the rezoning. The property, it's currently Zone C2, which does allow a number, a variety of auto-oriented uses, and rezoning would remove that from this property, because that would not be consistent with our walkable downtown. Of course, the property does have an unusual shallow shape that limits the layout specific to recessing that garage 20 feet behind the front facade of the home. The item was considered at the March 5th Planning Commission. Staff recommended approval subject to five conditions. There were no public comments at Planning Commission, and after discussion, Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval, subject to the following conditions. One, the site consisting of approximately .29 acres shall be Zone DTMU and developed substantially similar to the site plan prepared by Lou Oliver, except for modifications required to comply with the conditions below. Permitted uses above the detached garage shall be limited to the following: dwelling, professional office, and shop or studio craftsman artists. Two, minimum 18-foot-long driveway shall be required, so staff was not supporting that variance, and we did speak with the applicant, and the applicant understands that there is some flexibility in that site layout in order to achieve the additional length that they'll need on that driveway. Three, street-facing garage shall be recessed a minimum of 5 foot behind the front facade of the home. And then, condition number four is the condition that deals with architecture and materials, and as it currently reads in the staff report, I'll read that first, "Architecture and materials shall be substantially similar to the submitted renderings, except for modifications required to comply with the downtown consultant's markups related to the home and in compliance with the Alpharetta Downtown Code, and with final approval by DRB." The applicant's architect did address the downtown consultant's markups, so we don't feel that that is necessary to continue in that condition. And as I mentioned, my discussion with the applicant with respect to flexibility on the architectural style, and because the applicant does not, is not a developer, I thought I would go ahead and read the language that the applicant is asking for. So the applicant requests that the condition four change to the following. Architecture and materials shall be substantially similar to the submitted renderings, or shall comply with an architectural style in the downtown code with final approval by DRB. And then, condition number five, a mix of shrubs, vines, and grasses shall be planted along the proposed wall as approved by DRB. And that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman. So, I want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. This looks more like modern urbanism, the design of it, but yet, we're asking for downtown density, because it's right adjacent to the downtown core, is that right? Am I correct?
This property is in the downtown.
So it's in the downtown?
Yes.
But it's coming before us, because this style does not meet one of the design guidelines?
This application is coming before you, because they're proposing a rezoning. The dwelling, a residence, would not be allowed in the C2 zoning district, and that's why it's moving forward. The downtown consultant did review a previous elevation and provided markups, and the applicant's architect, Lou Oliver, made changes to the elevation, and the changes are incorporated into this.
Right. But there is another home beside her, is it not?
There is, yes.
Yes, that's already been approved.
The home, the one that you're talking about that's been built on Devois?
Hmm.
Yes, that would be to the east of this property.
Right, right, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Councilwoman Richard.
Actually, I don't think it's a question. I just want to clarify, Michael, if you could put the rendering back up.
Yeah.
With the changes that were made based on the feedback from our historic architecture consultant, this is more now considered a neoclassical? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, and there, again, the elevations that are presented here are not all the specific details, and even the downtown consultant admitted that, and typically, they're not the elevations that are usually prepared at public hearing, don't always have the level of detail. Of course, the application prior to this had a number of renderings, so that's a little bit different, but yeah, and this particular architect usually does not show all the details in his sketches.
Thank you.
But it has been reviewed by the downtown consultant.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time? Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Is the applicant here?
If you would, just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Michelle Sedgwick. I'm currently 2451 Commerce Street, right across the street, and I guess right now it's Zero Devois, is what we're speaking about. Thank you for your time. I did want to just mention that we were talking about mercantile. We had a whole, that was the design that we kind of fell under, and will continue as such, but yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can, or...
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
I'm not going to do brick, and I'm not painting it white. And you know, I just had a conversation with someone about that today, because I think I was the first one to do that 15 years ago at East Ravigi, but...
It's been done a few times, hasn't it?
And the shade of white has gotten brighter and brighter, so anyway.
So, you want to consider this, but you also are considering mercantile, which very much fits in with the design standards of the downtown areas.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. And also, thank you for being a longstanding business in our city, and all the support you all have given the city throughout the years.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We've enjoyed it.
Any questions for the applicants from council? Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards for this item?
We do not, sir.
But if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item, now is your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to approve Z-20-02/V-20-06, Sedgwick Residence slash Devois Road, with the conditions as read by Mr. Woodman, and I'll just restate condition number four, the change that he had suggested to us. Architecture and materials shall be substantially similar to the submitted renderings, or shall comply with an architectural style in the downtown code with final approval by DRB.
I'll second.
Have a motion?
Motion by Councilwoman Richard, and Councilman Binder, I believe, by a nose on that one, so we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this item? Councilwoman Richard, she had her hand up first, man. She's quicker than Donald, but she got you.
I just want to say, Ms. Sedgwick, thank you for building your residence here. I know you said at the Planning Commission you had looked at some other cities and were interested in doing something in another location, and we're thrilled that you're here. This looks like a great plan. Thank you.
Councilman Binder.
I guess I'll second again Councilmember Richard's thoughts there, but no, thank you very much. Devois in need of much love, and glad to see that it's improving, and I thought it was neoclassical, but then my second guess was mercantile, so I'm glad I'm on board with the architecture.
Any other comments from council? Well, I too would just thank you for your investment in downtown, when nobody else was investing in downtown, and you've always been creative, and you've always been a catalyst for change in a good way, and so we appreciate you bringing forward an item like this. That being said, I'll go ahead and call for a vote on the motion to approve item Z-20-02/V-20-06, Sedgwick Residence on Devois Road. All those in favor, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And it does pass unanimously. So that will close up the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. Next agenda item will be old business amendment to alcohol ordinance to allow on-premise sales and consumption in privately-owned dog parks. This is the second reading, so there's typically no public comment allowed. Ms. Cobb, you have the item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second reading of our amendment to allow on-premise sales and consumption in a privately-owned dog park. We did have one change since the first reading. As the ordinance read on May 18th, we stated that the hours of operation were actually limited to 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We did make a revision to that, stating that we would allow them the same requirements... We did make a revision to that stating that we would allow them the same requirements as a normal on-premise eating establishment, including the hours of permitted alcohol sales. The clean version and the red line versions were in the packet for your review, and we are recommending the second reading for your approval this evening, if you have...
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. And just to clarify, does that change address the concerns of the residents who spoke at the last meeting, the first reading?
Yes.
That did address the concerns that were brought forward before?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Councilwoman Binder.
The concerns being the hours or were there other ones? Jog my memory.
It was the concern about the hours because of the dog park having unusually early openings or something like that. So I just don't remember the details specifically, other than the fact that it was the hours of operation were a challenge based on the comments that we heard, and I wanted to make sure that we had addressed those with the minor change. So if there's no other questions from council, thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I didn't realize that was so loud. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, providing for certain amendments to Chapter III alcoholic beverages of the Code of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, to delete, modify, and add certain provisions governing the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises to provide regulations governing on-premises consumption for dog parks to provide for an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, sir. Still any questions from council about this item? Thank you very much, we appreciate it. So I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer a motion to approve the amendment to the alcohol ordinance to allow on-premise sales and consumption in privately-owned dog parks, and the ordinance is read by Mr. Sam Thomas.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Richard and a second by Councilman Binder. Any discussion on this item?
Welcome. Excited to have you, really. That's great.
Anyone else?
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun.
We do have that little vote that needs to be taken. But I do appreciate the opportunity to vote on a creative idea like this.
I'm a dog owner, can you tell? I'm so excited, I'm so excited. Sorry.
So, that being said, I will go ahead and call for a vote on the item. This is amendment to alcohol ordinance.
We don't need a vote anymore.
Yes, let's do that, just in case. Amendment to the alcohol ordinance to allow on-premise sales and consumption in privately-owned dog parks. All those in favor of the item, please vote yes; otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. Congratulations, anyone that was interested in that item. You're welcome. So that'll wrap up the old business portion of tonight's agenda, and we'll move on to the workshop. Workshop has one item, and that is the presentation and discussion of the recommended fiscal year 2021 budget. Director Harris, you have the floor.
Last week, they said I violated the policy and stood too close, but since I'm last, I have to put my papers down. Good evening, mayor and council. This is the third budget workshop, and we're gearing up to have the public hearings and the adoption of the mileage rates next, starting on June 1st, then the 15th and the 22nd. The only change to the document that was attached, the budget brief that was attached in your agenda, is the $3 million that had been originally transferred out over to the capital project fund instead is retained in the general fund and put aside with another million dollars, providing about 4.1 million for sort of a revenue contingency, and then we can go from there as we start the year. But that's it, and sort of open for questions. Go from there.
Do we have any questions from council at this time? Councilman Binder.
No questions. I just want to thank you for the follow-up information on the TSPLOS and the operating budget. So gives us lots to think of over while we're planning, not just for this year, but the next couple of years, so.
Thank you.
Since it's workshop, any other comments or questions? Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
There are just two items that I think to get you to thinking about and the rest of council, is to include the Stories project and reduce the amount to 20,000. I think during this time, when we have so many losses, it's an important program that we need to continue. And also, I'd like to see the funding of the Alpharetta app, being that we're not doing a website or pursuing others for $36,000, I think it's, and 75,000, 7,500 users, I think it's a good thing that we need to pursue with Gasto. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you. I know it's, we've spent a considerable amount of time with a class and compensation study. We've also got earmarked appropriated money for some sort of bonus provision for employees. And I pulled the Bureau of Labor and Statistics information today. This country has 14.7% unemployment, and I think that it may be a little insensitive to members who live in this community and pay property taxes to sit here and look at both of those things with such a significant portion of our workforce, our country's workforce, out of work. I don't know that, I wish it was the right message to send, but I've sat here and thought about it for weeks, and I don't feel good about saying this, but I don't feel good about putting that out there. I'm not in favor of furloughing people. I think we should take care of the ones that we have, but I'm also very sensitive to the fact that if 15% of this country is out of work, it's got to look like that here, too. And I don't know that it's the right message to send 1.5 out of 10 homes to say, we're going to bonus our workforce, or we're going to look at that, you know, cost of living adjustment. And that's a difficult conversation, but I do feel that way. Thank you.
If I could, I'd like to go ahead and just address, since I was the one that recommended those, all three of the items. I recommended not budgeting for the app. I don't see, especially if we've got council members saying that we can't... Maybe I should address the payroll first, because it's kind of the overarching and certainly the larger number. The reason I recommended the budget I did is because a few months ago, when this crisis first began, there was tremendous uncertainty, and our staff, under the current budget, was to receive a maximum of 3% incentives, merit pay. It's the way we give raises every year, and it has since the 2008 recession. And when that recession hit, they did not give raises that year, but they did give a one-time bonus, because our staff has worked that entire year, and their payroll is based on merit pay bonuses. We stopped that from happening at the time, which was the right decision to make, because we had so much uncertainty about revenue streams. As we started getting a better sense of what the numbers look to be like at this point, we have the money to give them the raises that they worked all year for. And so I thought the right thing to do was not to obligate the taxpayers forever, because a raise, a merit payroll increase, has a cumulative effect for eternity, as long as they're working here. But a one-time bonus is to say, we have the money now, we can do this. We're not committing to a raise next year because there's still uncertainty ahead. But the money exists, and that's why we budgeted that as a one-time instead of a raise that would accumulate for the rest of their career with the city. The compensation study was an item that was budgeted last year for the most part. We already had $620,000 reserved, because the last time a compensation study was done in this city, was that 2012, Tom? 2013?
In that range, it's 12 to 14.
It was early in my first term, I believe, so it was close to eight years ago at this point. And at that time, our council was very focused on creating downtown and building city center and investing in things to help facilitate the creation of what we sit in today and what is created within the mile that we just saw being zoned in Thompson Street. And though the compensation study recommended changes, none were really enacted. And for the eight years I've been on council, nothing has really been done to seriously address whether our salary format and balances had been objectively assessed and then actually acted on. And so when I look at the money and the revenue, I'm very sensitive to the fact that the labor market has changed, and I'm very sensitive to the fact that there are a lot of people in this community who aren't working. But our employees are, and they have been. They were working through the last recession. They've helped make this city where we are today. They're the ones that do everything we dictate and support from this dais, and nothing happens if they're not doing it. And our public safety of employees have been out there, working around the clock. For years, as liaison to public safety, I've heard discussions and frustrations, quite frankly, from some employees who didn't feel like there was a really good payroll process to reflect the value of some of the employees, specifically when public safety, but throughout the entire organization. And so as mayor, one of the first things I did was ask Bob to find us the right HR director to implement a policy of assessing what we were paying people and how we were paying them and how we were compensating them as a holistic approach. And it took me two years. Two years ago, I was elected mayor, and we're now just talking about actually being able to look at that data and act on it. And so, in my opinion, if we're going to even have discussions about stories and apps and things like that, the first thing we need to... My top priority is mayor, and I'm just one vote of seven. Like I said, this was my recommendation. If council doesn't want to do these things, it won't happen. But I strongly believe that if we're investing in this organization, this community, it starts with our employees. And when this assessment comes back and tells us that in November, we had an issue, and it had been an ongoing issue for years, we had the money budgeted to address it, I see no reason not to spend the money to address it. I understand. Next year, we could be sitting here in a much different position. We'll know more in three months, we'll know more in six months. But I thought that working with our staff and having conversations with council, that this was a good effort to take care of the people who take care of this community without obligating us long-term for anything that we can't manage based on current projections and current revenues. So I welcome the discussion, but that's how I feel. And I don't know that I'll change my mind, but if there are relevant facts that I'm not aware of, I'm certainly willing to listen. And as far as the app and the Stories, once again, I think there's certain things you need, and there's certain things you want, and I don't know that either one of those are really needed, and I don't have a lot of people banging down my door asking for either one. So that's why I didn't recommend them, but that's up to council. Councilman Binder.
Mayor Gilvin, I do want to applaud you on leading the charge on the compensation study, and I think it's similar to the last one, and I'm glad we're not talking about brick, but the employees that we enjoy and love serving with. I'm reading reports on, you know, the AJC articles talking about looking at the last recession on the sales tax and how that the first year was bad and then it got worse the second year. We don't know about the property tax yet. What I would feel comfortable with, and I think all of us here want to do the compensation plan, is I'd feel comfortable with the spot bonus and then taking out the comp plan and the bonuses and leaving that powder dry and just waiting till at least we get the tax digest back and that information. But I know I'd be on board with it once the numbers, and that is a high priority for me, too, but I'm just more under the battening the hatches and keeping as much powder dry on both capital, which we've done a great job with, our commitments to our residents, and our commitment to our staff, and just hold both sides, just say, let's take a breath. Let us wait till the tax digest numbers come in, see what are going to come in for, if people have any arguments about the property tax assessments that they have, and seeing that their stores have been closed and they don't know when they're going to open them. And then we go from there. So the good news is, I think you've done a great job, and I think we're all fully committed. We just, maybe just take a little bit of a breath until we at least get the next three months and get those tax assessments back. Because you're right, the sales taxes, we're really not going to know until, as they hit. But that's just kind of where I'm at on it. But I agree with where you're going and your passion, and I just, a couple of months wouldn't hurt. And plus, I think both those things are in April anyways, that we're planning on doing, the compensation and the compensation study and the merit raises, correct? For the second half of the...
The merit is in there, is the only one that is in there marked as in April 1st of next year. The one-time is fully funded to pay it one-time, and any time, once you trigger it, the one-time compensation, lack of a better word, bonus. And then the class and comp is in there fully at 620,000, which is a full fiscal year impact, you know, based on when you approve the study and when you want to enact it.
So the study hasn't been approved yet, but that's for April?
No, the study is, you know, we've been working on it for a year, so once it's out there that they're below market, I think it's then the decision...
It'll be there.
...of council whether it's in there. But it's in there for the full year, so once it was adopted, we would put it in place.
You got the merit increase, which is typically spring.
Merit is a program, April 1, which generally speaking, at the retreat, we do talk about whether we can put the merit in place, you know. That's every year, sort of that format again. So that one for sure has that mechanism. I think the class and comp has a mechanism as far as it coming to, at least to the board as far as a study, but we do have it fully budgeted under the mayor's approach that we believe it's roughly in the $620,000 neighborhood, and whatever time you trigger that, in July forward, we would, you know, put that in play.
And the quint, which is kind of under, at least a lot of assumptions I'm hearing is a must-have eventually for the next year, that's an additional 600 annually, right?
That's 700,000 annually. We have 300 this year, we'll need four this year. We don't have 300. We could, depending on where that $4 million we've set aside for contingency, depending on revenues, we would make the decision to enact.
Yeah, but just moving forward annually...
It's 700,000.
So everything that we're talking about, close to $3 million annually adding, when you put in the freeze positions back in, there's two and a half without the freeze positions, 3 million. That's just a lot going on, and we don't really know the revenues one. So that's my only point on that. But it's definitely this conversation to be had, and I think we're all at a good place where we agree, we want to take care of our staff, so.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
Thank you. I understand that this budget process is very difficult, and I applaud you for what you've done. It's not an easy process, and I don't like for these two programs to get conflated with the compensation package and all that, because that was not the intent. But I did have a conversation with Director Rogers about taking the 20,000 out of the Greenway Fund, which is funded at 150, and putting 20,000 toward the Stories project. The Stories project, its primary feature is to feature our elderly citizens, and many of them are of age. That doesn't change. You can't take a year off and not, if you do, you lose people during that year. We've already lost people in between the funding from last year and this year. I think it's important to continue to, especially right now with COVID and all that, to continue to record our history and that be an ongoing project. And as far as the app, that's another project that directly benefits our citizens. It's 30, $56,000 that has a direct impact to our citizens. And with that, we started that app two years ago... And with that, we started that app two years ago. He did it for a dollar for us, a dollar. And now he's asking for 36,000 to include other features on it. He's got 7,500 people that go to that app that report things on the app. I don't think that's a lot to continue a program right now that I think is necessary and vital to a lot of our citizens. And I don't think we use it to the fullest extent that we could. Thank you.
Councilman Merkel.
I think I go back to what was already said here. We've got a famous or infamous former councilman used to always say that, it's wants and it's needs. You know, it's no different than sitting at the kitchen table with your spouse, figuring out what can we afford to do, what do we need to continue to do? You know, I've got a kid that's got one more year in college, that's no longer a want, that's a need, need to finish that up type thing. And I kind of feel the same way with the Greenway. I mean, if we just start taking money out of, you know, there's a pile of, you know, what, to go out into the woods where the Greenway is going or the loop and say, okay, so we can have recordings, we're going to stop pouring concrete right here? When we've been planning to pour this thing through the whole time. So it's not a slush fund to just go take out of what you want, otherwise you could take all 56 out of there if you felt that was the case. So I don't support the recording, especially for $20,000. I've listened to them. It would cost you nothing to take a tape recorder and do the recordings yourselves and have the discussion from the Historical Society. And then when we have money down the road, we can convert those into the format that you need to display and run them through there. And as far as the app goes, that thing, I was in the very initial discussions, probably four years ago, before it even got going. And the constant comment that came up was it has to become, it has to have the ability to stand on its own at some point. The city can't keep paying the money for an outside source who should be selling advertising on there. And if this, if this app was applicable to the community at the level you say it is, why is the community not supporting it? Why are the local merchants not buying advertising on it? Why is it not generating any of its own revenue? So those two things don't really come high on my list. You know, if we've got to take money out of the loop, it's going to be for salaries as far as I'm concerned. But I do not want to treat, I don't want to treat previous numbers in that department as a fund that you can just go take out what you want. It wasn't approved for that.
Councilman Binder.
Follow-up on Councilmember Mitchell's comments. I've mentioned this multiple times on different things, and so you'll be happy this one ends up on your side, Donald. But it's hard to flick on and off a switch and try to get it back on. So I would be supportive of putting an amount in just for the taping, and we can have the money next year to edit on there. So find out what that is, and maybe it's 10, 5, what, 15? I don't know, but find that, because you are right. We need to record that history, and that's in there. So, but just find out what it would be. I would say, you know, as previous experience as liaison with Morgan, shoot, man, we just, in December, we showed a video about how the Greenway was going out. So I'm surprised to hear we have money available to take it towards it. So sections of it is having runoff issues. So I don't want to steal from Paul to pay Mary on this one, but I am supportive of finding what you need to tape and keep recording that history, because that's something that if, it's good to have our history. You know, I know we do a good job of moving forward in the future of Alpharetta, but we do need to record the past and celebrate that. So, but I don't think it needs to be anywhere near that number right now. So let's find out what that is.
Any other discussion or comments from council?
I would like to follow up on-
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell.
The money for the Greenway is not dedicated for any amount of yardage or feet. It's just an open fund for Greenway. I'd like to know, Director Rogers, how much money has been cut from this budget out of all the cultural programs that we have as a city that directly benefit our citizens? As far as the Stories Project, it started out at 50,000, it got reduced to 25,000, and now I'm asking to put 20,000 in for our senior adults in our cities so that we can continue to record them. It's not a tape recorder, it's professional videography with lighting and all that. You can't go back and add video footage of someone who's passed. It just doesn't happen that way.
Director Harris, I'm not sure you're the best person. It may be better to ask Director Rogers about this. As I recall, when we were talking about a bond last year, there was a number of deferred maintenance for the walkway at the Greenway. What was the number of that?
Okay, so my memory's not as good as it used to be. So I'm going to pull that figure, but I think it was about $2.5 million that was deferred maintenance on the Greenway.
Does that sound about right, Director Harris?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. I thought so. I thought it was in the 2 million range. I wasn't sure, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, that's all. I was just curious. Thank you. Councilman Burnett.
Fundamental question, Tom. Every year, we have a millage rate of 5.75. Well, I won't say every year, but that's what it's been for the last 10-ish. So every year that we retire debt, we refund bonds, some of that's bonds, some of that goes into, we use some of that portion to cover into the operations millage rate, which is funds day-to-day or one-time capital projects that sit outside of, you know, bond initiatives that the mayor lays out in his budget every year. Is the difference between last year recommended from an operational millage rate perspective and this year is .115? In theory, as we retire debt, that number gets larger, correct? Assuming we keep the same total millage rate. Is every-
Well, when you retire debt, you're retiring at level, and so the debt is, it's really about the appreciation of your-
Assets.
Of the taxable values, other than a true refinancing that saved us savings, correct?
So is that more or less an estimation? We have to put that number, the operations number, against the overall whole pie, correct?
Correct.
So at .115, last year, you said every one-hundredth of a mil was about $50,000? Yes?
Correct.
Ish? Close enough for government work.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
So at $550,000, that's what the operations millage rate is expected to grow this year? In your estimation, is that fair?
It's fair.
You can tell me if I'm wrong. I just want to know if we have, besides, you know, I'm fully supportive of coming to consensus with seven people. I just want to make sure that I have a fundamental understanding of how that works, because I only get to ask once, I should have asked two years ago when I got elected.
Generally, it's been transferred over, and then where it came into play is, and where it could come into play, although we just hit COVID-19, social distancing-
Absolutely.
Is that when we've shifted it over, we've put it towards paying some capital, one-time capital. And then we're able to, if we were going to do a bond down the road or something, you're able to sort of shift it back and pay for a bond. In this case, that transfer over is being absorbed to balance the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to consider it on some level, even if it's theoretically put into unallocated capital, the need, the infrastructure needs that this city has are not going to go away. I would like to be able to take that .115, even if it's earmarked in unallocated capital, to be able to start strategic planning for two, three, four years from now, because $550,000 in theory, give or take 100 or 200,000. The right message to this community is to continue to evaluate those needs, because if the day arises that TSPLOST II doesn't pass, there is no question that we're not going to be able to continue to do things like we've done them if that doesn't pass. I would really like to be able to look at it that this year, even like I said, if you're going to use it for unallocated capital, which I'm supportive of, but be able to take that. If we would earmark that money for two years or for three years, all of a sudden, you have the debt service to something that's really meaningful. So I would like you guys to consider how to balance that. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Well, Tom, good luck sorting through all that.
Thanks.
Thank goodness we get to have a public hearing about it soon.
See you next week.
Thanks. No, but I do appreciate the comments, and I know it's a challenging year. Just in the big context of things, this is the third budget cycle this council's been through with me as mayor, and we have not had a stable environment yet because of the tax assessments and the upheaval with Fulton County's assessments. Two weeks after I was elected mayor, and then we had that still throughout last year's budget process, tremendous uncertainty. We didn't have a tax digest at that point. And so the third, actually, we had the mid-year budget where things looked really great, and we had all these great designs back in January, and then COVID hit in March. And we're right back at square one in so many ways with uns- So it's a credit to this council, it's a credit to the staff that have helped us through these budgets cycles and such tremendous instability in projections. But we'll figure it out. I know we will, and I appreciate it. I take to heart your comments, and we'll just continue to figure out what's best for the city the best we can. But thank you all, I appreciate it. Thank you, Tom. So that'll wrap up tonight's workshop. And if you're here and we're waiting on your chance to make a public comment, here's your opportunity. I'm seeing no one stand up, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. How about reports this evening? Do we have Councilman Binder?
Couple ones. Rucker Road's looking really good, so able to use those sidewalks. A lot of people are enjoying the timeout. So thank you, Pete, to you and your staff, and just finishing out that punch list. So I know you're doing a good job of making sure they don't slow down at all. So that's good. And then I participated, I went and voted today. I'd like to applaud Fulton County on doing a good job with how they're handling that. And it was, it went smoothly. It was a little bit slower than normal, but it was, everyone was socially distant, and it seemed like the process was doing great. So good job to Fulton County. There was a line, and it just went a little bit slower because we were six feet apart, but just want-
Councilman Burnett.
I would like to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kathleen and Jim Craig, Jim was a longtime rec commissioner here, he's the Parks and Rec Director over in our friendly sister city of Milton. She retired from the Fulton County School System today, and so she has been a teacher, paraprof for many, many children in this community, and they were the first people that I met when I moved here. And I just want to say congratulations to her, because those folks don't get acknowledged nearly enough. And 25, 26, 30 years of putting up with children like the ones I've got is impressive. So congratulations, Kathleen.
Councilman Merkel.
Just, everybody's seeing the updates, we haven't deviated in parks from the bogies we've set for the openings. We've got more coming around June 1st, so next week we'll see some more things open up. Pool's technically on schedule for June 15th. One of the things that Morgan pointed out, the June 15th date is not necessarily the date that we can have the pool ready by, we could do that much sooner. It's the staff and the size of our pools. You'll see in some neighborhood pools that are opening up real quick, there's some that opened up this week and last weekend, they're going a little quicker than ours. And then the last one, after being here myself, going on five years, I've had the pleasure of working with Michael Woodman for this time period. Where did Michael go? Did he leave us? He did, but this is his six-year anniversary, so he's done an amazing job. I enjoy working with him, so thank you, Michael.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell.
Two things, real quick. The Veterans Memorial Day Service, which our mayor participated in this year, and just recognize Scott Dahl and William Perkins and Mr. McGary? McGary. I tell you, if you didn't hear that service or get to see it online, you can still go online, I think it was, what, 25 minutes? It was maybe 40, but it felt like it flew by. It was just emotionally heart pounding, and I tell you, it was gripping and it was done remotely, but it was so beautifully prepared and done. Go see that. And also, the day before, Ms. Richards has a picture here. We had, she and I went out to, for North Farm Day, and we celebrated with all the folks. They were out on the, it must have been 100 folks that were gathered there having fun, and they were all social distanced. But it was a fun day. We threw candy and stuff like that, and so celebrate our North Farm neighborhood staple in our community for many years.
Well, can I-
They ask us, in our defense.
I have a disclaimer here. First of all, all of council received the invite from North Farm, and the HOA specifically asked city council folks to come through the neighborhood in the parade that they were organizing.
Preach, sister.
And they said, quote unquote, because so few of our homeowners know who their council members are, bring your campaign signs. So Councilmember Mitchell went all out and got a banner done, and I had to-
Before I knew Karen was riding with me.
But it was a great day. And actually, our public safety folks also participated. We had a fire truck and a couple of squad cars come through as well, and it was really cool. All these residents were out on their driveway, and it was a beautiful afternoon, and they were so excited to be outside and enjoying a Memorial Day, and it was a great experience, so.
That's awesome. Any other? Mr. Regus.
How about a report on operations?
Please.
Yeah, today, we opened back up the Alpharetta Community Center, the Alpharetta Arts Center, and the Will's Park Rec Center. Everything went well, as we thought it would. Opening up the first will be the picnic pavilions in the parks, the playgrounds, the athletic fields for youth organizations. We'll start allowing the rental of Will's Park Equestrian Center. And the history museum here will open up next Monday, okay? And of course, we'll also have the summer camps open in next Monday. And the town green opens next Monday. So the grass has never looked better, and the rest has done it well. So thanks to Morgan and his staff. And one last thing, you know, I don't think I've recognized Pete's crews for the work that they have done. And there are 25 people on those, 24 people on the crews that have never missed a day in all this. So good for them. They do a lot of the unsung work in the city, and they really do a good job of that. So thanks to Pete and the crews. And any questions, I'll answer them, please.
Any questions for Mr. Regus? Thank you, sir. Tremendous job getting us through all this. I appreciate it. So I have one report then. I'll just wrap up. I forget how many weeks ago, probably about three or four weeks ago, Director Rogers came up to me and said that someone had approached him from one of the high schools locally and had wanted to see if the interest the city would have in allowing them to have a graduation ceremony in cars at North Point Mall, apparently Alpharetta. High school representatives had reached out to North Point Management. North Point Management, like I said, this was three or four weeks ago, and it was even then different than today as far as people starting to resume some sense of normalcy. And he came to me and asked if it would be okay. And this was a time when we were talking about, you know, the governor was maybe starting to relieve some of the restrictions and things like that. But there was a tremendous amount of anxiety and still uncertainty, and we're not out of this by any stretch of the imagination, but it was even more so at the time. And when Director Rogers asked me if we would be willing to do something like that, knowing, he didn't say it, but the unwritten implication was, are we willing to take a risk? Because we could get hammered in the press or in the- we could get hammered in the press or in the news or something like that? Are we willing, as a community, to allow those young people to celebrate their graduation? And all I told him was, if you and your staff believe they can do it safely, help them do it safely, and if not, so be it, but it's important to them if they can. And I'll forward you, well, actually, I think Morgan may have forwarded the email earlier. That's the kind of staff we have, and it's just remarkable to see the difference that they made in those young people's lives and their families' lives in a time when so many people would have just said, nope, not going to do it. We're government, we don't have to do that. We're not going to take a risk. Why would we stick our necks out when elected officials might get hammered? But I can trust our staff to make great decisions and do great things for this community. So thank you, all of you, I appreciate it. I better wrap up before I start bawling. So if that's all the reports, we will close this meeting, and we are adjourned until the next.